I'll call the monthly Board of Education meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
To the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Mr. Quinn makes a motion. No second. Mr. Pondrum, second. All in favor, show hands. Motion carries. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through D.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, show hands. Motion carries. Board recognition, Mrs. Bales.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening. Tonight is one of those bittersweet evenings. Every year in April, we do our individual board recognitions and then we recognize the Board of Education after conducting old business. I first would like to start by recognizing our current officers. Our officers are willing to take on additional responsibilities and guidance for our Board of Education. They take on these additional responsibilities because they care deeply about the students that we serve. They're committed to providing leadership necessary to continue to foster growth within our school district. Our Board of Education deeply cares for our students, staff, and community, and the first person I would like to recognize is Paul Schultz, President. Mr. Schultz has served six years as President for the Waynesville Board of Education and three terms on the Board of Education. Paul is a native and proud Tiger, is extremely supportive of our student educators, and super proud of our district's students. Mr. Schultz has remained a steadfast leader for the district. His guidance, support, and encouragement have been invaluable to me as a superintendent. I will miss his encouraging messages and his funny messages as well. For me personally, he will always be remembered as the first Board President I got to work with as superintendent and had the pleasure of working with. I have to admit, I have been very spoiled because he's made it very easy for me. He always steps up to help communicate items to other members, answers questions from other Board members, and gives me a heads up when needed. I'm gonna miss you, sir. On behalf of the district, it is my honor to show you a small token of appreciation this evening. Thank you. Next, I'd like to recognize Rick Harn, our Vice President. Rick Harn has served one year as Vice President and four years on the Board of Education. He is highly active in the Waynesville Foundation. His experiences with serving in the military are an asset in assisting the Board to continue to focus on providing the best possible experiences for our military students. He is always willing to volunteer to help in any capacity needed and truly has a servant heart for our students and staff. I value and appreciate his guidance and high expectations for our district, Mr. Rick Harn. Next, I'd like to recognize Andy Anderson, Treasurer. Mr. Anderson is welcome back to his first year on the Board of Education, serving as Treasurer. However, he served nine years previously. While Andy has previous experience he brings to the Board, he is always open for new and innovative ideas. Andy is present at many district events, offering encouragement and support. He is so proud of our community and serving our students and staff as a Board Member. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Last but not least, Ms. Janelle Rao, Secretary. Mrs. Rao has served as Secretary for two years and three years on the Board of Education. Mrs. Rao serves in many leadership roles throughout the community. In fact, you'd be hard pressed to see a community event that she is not in attendance. But that's not what I admire most about her. When she's in attendance, she's engaged in participating and linking up people to try to continue to foster relationships throughout our community. Janelle is detail-oriented and a big-picture thinker. Her thoughtful perspective continues to be a tremendous asset to our Board of Education. Thank you, Janelle. Thank you to our Board Officers. I would like now to call the...
Or do you want to get a picture first, Mary Ann? Yeah, okay, sorry. I could sense it, yeah. Alright, good, alright.
Thank you to our Board Officers. I would like to now call all outgoing Board of Education members forward, Paul Schultz and Janelle Rao. It is my honor to present you with a token of appreciation for completing your term on behalf of the Waynesville School District. You all have been an absolute pleasure to work with. We thank you for your commitment and service to the district, and thank you for volunteering your time.
You have more pictures. You guys can sit down if you want to, or if you want more pictures, that's good too.
In closing, our students benefit from having a stable Board with diverse perspectives on complex issues that we face. I want you all to know that your time is valued and the work that you do is deeply appreciated. So with the closing of one Board, we look forward to swearing in of a new Board in just a couple of minutes. We appreciate your contributions of excellence to this team and look forward to great things to come.
House resolution, Mrs. Bales.
So, Mr. Schultz asked me not to do this, but I did it anyway. And when he found out that I did, I said, "I don't have to listen to you anymore, Mr. Schultz." So, Mr. Schultz, please come forward as I present you with a House resolution. And I'm not gonna read all the whereas', but it talks about all the great... Well, I'll let you read it, sir. But it talks about all the great meaningful work that Mr. Schultz has done while serving on our Board of Education and while serving as President.
Alright, we'll move on to action items. Two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five Professional Development Handbook. Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. The two thousand forty-four, twenty-five Professional Development Handbook was presented as a first reading at the March Board of Education meeting. This handbook is brought before the Board of Education each year for review and approval. Administration recommends approval of the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five Professional Development Handbook as presented.
Any comments or questions? Do I have a motion? Mr. Harn makes a motion, no second. Ms. Rao, second. All in favor, show hands. Motion carries. District Assessment Plan. Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. The district assessment plan is reviewed, updated, and presented for approval annually. The assessment plan outlines assessments that will be utilized by the district, use and dissemination of results, as well as test security procedures. Administration recommends approval of the district assessment plan as presented.
Any comments or questions? Do I have a motion? Mr. Anderson makes a motion, no second. Ms. Rao, second. All in favor, show hands. Seven, no motion carries. Job descriptions. Dr., go forth.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following attached proposed job description is presented for your review with the first reading waived. Five point zero, three point one, School Resource Officer. The administration requests approval of the above job description as presented.
Comments or questions? Do I have a motion? Mr. Quinn makes a motion, no second. All in favor, show hands. Seven, no motion carries. Twenty-four, twenty-five Staffing Plan. Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following attached staffing plan is presented for your review as a second reading. Administration requests approval of the above staffing plan for the two thousand forty-four, twenty-five school year as presented.
Any comments or questions? Do I have a motion? Mr. Anderson makes a motion, no second.
Second.
Ms. Lurcher, second. All in favor, show hands. Motion carries. Okay, Math Textbook Adoption. Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Throughout the late winter and the spring, teacher teams have been reviewing math textbook materials as we have been using our current ones for six years, so we're up for a new adoption. The proposal from each of the teams for K five and six eight was for Savis learning. These proposals provide teacher manuals, manipulative kits, classroom resources, student books, as well as six years of online access for students. And also the implementation, training, and professional development required to support this adoption. For the K five program, the adoption works out to forty-six dollars per year per student, and for the six through eight, it's forty-one dollars per year per student. Administration requests approval of the textbook proposal as presented.
Any comments or questions? Do I have a motion? Mr. Harn makes a motion, Mr. Anderson, second. All in favor, show hands. Seven, no motion carries. Election Results, Mrs. Bales.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have for you the official results of the school board election. Thank you to those that came out and voted. Administration makes a motion to accept election results as certified by the County Clerk of Pulaski County.
Any comments or questions? Do I have a motion? Mr. Quinn makes a motion, Mr. Anderson, second. All in favor, show hands. Motion carries. Before I leave, I want to thank each and every one of you. It's been a pleasure and an honor to be on this Board. Everybody at this table, in the crowd, all the buildings, you have no idea the impact you've made on me and the kids, like those back there giggling stuff. The kids really, 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 as I've told them many times, I have hope in our future with the kids I've watched. And I gotta thank my wife. Without her, I couldn't do any of this. And thank you very much, and we are adjourned. Sign night, die.
At this time, we will have Mrs. Ace, who is the Secretary of the Board of Education, swear in our two new recently-elected candidates, Mrs. Janelle Rao and Mr. Mike Keeling.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Missouri and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of school board member and and for the Waynesville R six school district county of Pulaski state of Missouri based on my ability according to the law. I'm gonna make a mark unless you want to sign for me.
Mr. Keeling, I feel like you may have done that before. You've had it memorized. Congratulations, Mr. Keeling and Mrs. Rao. As per Board Policy BCA, I will serve as temporary chairperson to call the meeting to order and to facilitate the election of officers. It is recommended the Board approve the candidates for Board Officers. If approved, these offices will be assumed immediately. Just to review, I will accept nominations for President. Seconds are not required by Roberts Rules. A member can rise to accept or decline the nomination. After each nomination, I will say the candidate's name and ask if there are any further nominations. A motion is not required to close nominations unless it is apparent the individuals are being nominated as an honor only and have no intention to serve. After a reasonable time for nominating, after a reasonable time, nominating will close. Next, I will ask for all those in favor of the candidate, one, those in favor of the candidate, two. If there is only one candidate, move to approve the President by acclamation. At this point, the new President will assume the responsibilities of taking nominations for the other Board Office, and then we will elect Vice President, Secretary, Treasurer, and MSBA Delegate. At this time, I open the floor and take any nominations for President.
Mrs. Bales, I would like to nominate Mrs. Janelle Rao as the President.
Okay, we have Mrs. Janelle Rao nominated for Presidents. Ms. Rao, do you accept?
I do.
Okay, Janelle has accepted. Are there any other nominations for President? Hearing none, move selected candidate by acclamation. Congratulations, Mrs. Rao, new Board President, and I'm off the hook now.
Obviously, some very big shoes to fill, and Paul, you will definitely be missed. I am honored to accept the position as our district Board President. I look forward to continue working with each of you as we collaborate with Mrs. Bales and her administrative team to continue working to serve our students, our teachers, our families, and our staff. Each one of us in our individual roles can continue the positive forward momentum that we already have. Thank you. We now have an executive board to fill, and so I will take nominations for a Vice President.
Ms. Rao, I'd like to nominate Rick Harn.
Rick Harn, you've been nominated for Vice President. Do you accept?
Yes.
Are there any other nominations for Vice President? Hearing none, Rick Harn will be our Vice President by acclamation. And we have our Secretary position. Are there any nominations for Secretary, please?
I nominate Mr. Andy Anderson, Secretary.
Alright, we have Mr. Andy Anderson as Secretary. Mr. Anderson, do you accept? Are there any other nominations for Secretary? Mr. Anderson will be our Secretary by acclamation. Now we have a Treasurer position open. Do I have any nominations for Board Treasurer?
I would like to nominate Charles Quinn.
Charles Quinn, do you accept Board Treasurer? Are there any other nominations for Board Treasurer? Alright, hearing none. Congratulations, Mr. Quinn. We now have our executive board, and we have our MSBA Delegate. Do we have any nominations for MSBA Delegate?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Janelle Rao.
Do I accept? Yes. Yes, I am happy to accept to continue to represent our district with Missouri School Board Association. Are there any other nominations for Delegate? Because I would gladly share. Hearing none, I am the MSBA Delegate by acclamation. Alright, we have our agenda. I would entertain a motion to adopt our agenda for the evening.
Motion.
Mr. Harn, second. Mr. Pondrum, all in favor, show of hands. Motion passes. Citizens' participation statements as per Board Policy BDDH.
Thank you, Ms. Rao. The district has not received any requests for citizens' participation per Board Policy BDDH.
Alright, citizens' update. Bridget Plummer.
Good afternoon, Mrs. President. Happy National Purple Up Day. On behalf of Fort Leonard Wood, I would like to send a huge thank you to the district and the Board for your dedication to providing amazing education, support, and opportunities for our military kids. We hope you can join us this Saturday for our Mom C Palooza Celebration. We will have bounce houses, music, food trucks, military static displays, and hands-on activities, obstacle courses, games, and activities, and so much more. The event is this Saturday, April twentieth, from ten to one at Gerlach Track. We are still accepting sign-ups for our Base Race Teen Challenge. Check with the Fort Leonard Wood MWR page for more information. There will be a murder mystery event this Friday at the Persian Community Center, suitable for ages thirteen and up. It has a nineteen ninety-nine graduation ceremony, and somebody has died. April first through September thirtieth, Doherty Bowling Center is participating in the Kids Bowl Free Program. This is two free games per child per day. If you're interested, please sign up on thekidsbowlfree.com. Pending any questions, that's all I have.
Sounds like y'all are busy. Any questions or comments? Alright, at this time, district announcements. Ms. Bales?
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I'd like to welcome the Freedom staff. My goodness, you guys have shown up tonight, and we look forward to hearing more about the great work that you've done later on in the spotlight on education. April is the month of the Military Child, and as you can see, today is Purple Up Day, as the audience is wearing purple. And as Mike Rawlings has said numerous times, this is the only day he would allow Tigers to wear purple throughout the district because he loves military students. Thank you to the USO and Culvers for delivering seven thousand Sundays to our students and staff last week. That was a great experience, and all students enjoyed that. I loved it because Kelly said, "You know, we don't want to just give ice cream to military students." While they do experience the most transition, the students that stay here and lose friends experience transition too, and so it was an honor for them to serve all of our students' Sundays. And as I mentioned, today is Purple Up. Even Central Office has lit up purple at night for Month of the Military Child, so if you drive by at night, you can enjoy that. The high school students will present their musical newsies at seven PM on April eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth in the Waynesville High School Auditorium. General admission is seven dollars. Student and staff admission is six dollars, and for children, ten and under, five dollars. Doors will open thirty minutes prior to the start of the show, and if you've ever attended any of the plays that they put on in the auditorium, they are just outstanding. Spring Festival of Nations will be held Friday, April twenty-sixth, from four-thirty to five-thirty in the Waynesville High School parking lot. Please save the date for our community's Salute to Service event, which will be held on May eighth. On Wednesday, May eighth, in our high school gymnasium, we'll recognize all South Central Missouri High School seniors who will be serving in the military or JROTC programs, and that's always one of my most favorite events of the year. Applications for Parker Preschool are now closed. Forty students will be selected through a random lottery drawing held on April fifth at one o'clock PM. Graduation will be held Friday, May seventeenth, at Tiger Stadium, weather permitting. The last day of school for students in kindergarten through eleventh grades will be Friday, May twenty-fourth. And I'd just like to take a moment to thank the staff that are here in this room and also the staff who are not, our community, for voting prop to. Students won that day. This is critical funding that the district will use to continue to upgrade our security for students throughout the district and expand preschool opportunities. But it certainly was a team effort, and I appreciate everybody's efforts that are in this room and not in this room for making that happen for our students, so thank you. That is all.
Awesome, and I definitely echo the thank you for Proposition Two passing. Alright, item six, Consent Agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Pondrum, second. Mr. Harn, second. All in favor, show of hands. Thank you. Item seven, Student Recognitions. Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight, we are going to recognize Kristalyn Watkins. She is a senior at Waynesville High School. She brought home best of division in tenth through twelfth grade in the digital and photography category at the Missouri Art Education Association State Conference recently. Unfortunately, she's not able to be with us tonight, so we'll get her award to her, but we do want to recognize her and say congratulations. Thank you.
Alright, Spotlight on Education, Freedom Elementary. Mrs. Vernon?
Thank you, Mrs. President. I have Emily Hawks here to present our classified and our certified spotlight.
Good evening. Susan Wardenhausen is our classified spotlight. Miss W., as we call her, comes into work every day with a growth mindset. Every day, she provides small group instruction to students in co-teaching classrooms as if she was the regular education teacher. She creates a strong rapport with all students she comes in contact with, ensuring they understand expectations, our learning, and our growing. We love her at Freedom Elementary for her hard work, kind nature, and willingness to always put kids first.
Our Freedom Certified Spotlight is the one and only Ms. Jennifer Munoz. Mrs. Munoz exhibits the qualities that all educators strive for. Every morning, she starts her day with a smiling face to our students as they enter Freedom Elementary, and she ends the day waving goodbye as they exit. In the classroom, she provides effective small group instructions to all of the students. Mrs. Munoz implements specialized instruction for her special education students and educates them in the way that allows them to find their voice and be heard. Freedom Elementary is such a bright place with her present because she creates such a positive culture around herself. Although the end is near for her, and she is going to be dearly missed, Mrs. Munoz gives her heart every day that she walks through the doors of Freedom Elementary.
I feel like I should ask Mrs. Munoz to the podium and ask her a few questions. What do you think, Freedom? She's always good about asking me some questions when I go for super sessions, so I thought I'd reverse that.
She does, and I try to vet them, but it doesn't always happen. If I can have our kindergarten team come up along with Mrs. Sisson and Mrs. Augustin, if you're here. The collaborative team spotlight is awarded to our kindergarten team, Mrs. Bab, Mrs. Hinson, Mrs. Jo- Mrs. Bab, Mrs. Henson, Mrs. Jones, Mrs. Kelly, Mrs. Powery, Mrs. Ross, Mrs. Wells, Mrs. Sisson, and Mrs. Augustin. The success of the students within these classes can be seen within the positive classroom environment, the growth of weekly team meeting reports at PLC, and we're most proud of their cheers when they meet 80% proficiency, which happens often. On the pre-assessment for how many in a set, 39% of students were proficient or advanced. On the post-test, 89% of students were proficient and advanced. The strategy they used was explicit direct instruction with "I do, you do, we do." Thank you to this dedicated team of educators for always putting students first.
Absolutely wonderful. I love the energy at Freedom. Thank you, Mrs. Vernon. Staff Recognitions, Mr. Tronstaff?
Good evening, Board. This evening, I'm here to recognize our Employee of the Month for April. If you give me a moment, I'd like to, before I start that, our community went through quite a bit with the tornadoes, a lot of people stepping up. And sometimes, the people behind the scenes, I don't think get some of the recognition. There's a lot of people that played part of that. But I would like to recognize Mr. Pritchard, who runs maintenance, and his men who have went through and did a lot of the cleanup and stuff to help us get ready, along with, you know, the community and stuff like that with Electric. But I think sometimes, you don't know what you have until it's gone. You take for granted the people we have, and without the maintenance part of our team. And I know I'm not maintenance, I'm transportation. But I appreciate Mr. Pritchard. And his staff. So, for the real reason we're here, for me, Transportation Employee of the Month is Shelley Oliver. Shelley is one of our early childhood drivers, deals with three- and four-year-olds every day. When I approached her, I always let the people know that's getting it before everybody else, and she said, "Why me?" And so... I didn't write it down, but it's in my heart. So anyway, she's one of those that always puts others before herself, and it's not obvious. I've seen a picture on Facebook where it had her generator running a cord to her house and another cord running to the neighbor's house. So whether she's at work, whether she's at home, she's always there when you need her. She doesn't complain. You'll know when she's around when she laughs because it's very distinct, and I love her for that. But I'm glad she's part of our team. If I didn't mention already, she's been with us for about 18 and a half years, and I hope she's around for a lot longer. So I just want to thank you, Shelley, for everything you do and for choosing Transportation to make a difference in children's lives.
Three and four-year-olds definitely has to have the patience of a saint. All right, Community Recognitions, Dr. Goforth?
Thank you, Madam President. The Waynesville School District would like to recognize Mr. Paul Schultz, a representative of La Cleet Electric, for his support of the Caring and Sharing and Education Program. This program is funded by the La Cleet Electric Employees Organization through donations from their employees. We would like to thank La Cleet Electric for their continued support to the district.
All right, Discussion Items, 2023-24 Winter Sports Report, Mr. Ace?
Thank you, Mrs. President. Haven't said that. Okay, so tonight, we're just going to discuss our four main topics. Academic Student Athletic, Athlete Recognition, our summer dates coming up very quickly, and then just our communication processes within the athletic office. Real quick, just looking at our GPAs from this winter. We had, did have actually the highest since my six-year tenure, overall varsity GPA, which was a 3.43 for all of our student athletes. So that was tremendous. If you look, it breaks it down into overall, that's all student athletes. Any kid that came out for the first week of practices may or may not have finished. But we ran those, and those were a 3.35 GPA. And then those varsity caliber athletes, that GPA was a 3.43. In addition to that, we had all of our winter academic all-conference nominees. 3.75 or above is all-conference. We had 67 student athletes that reached that 3.75 mark. And then honorable mention, we had 34, which was a 3.5 to 3.74. You can look at the breakdown per sport. We pretty much, you know, we had most of our student athletes actually falling into that all-conference range, so we see that more and more. Student Athlete Recognition, this winter, we had 24 student athletes out of all of our winter sports that were all-conference. We had nine of those individuals that were all-district, and then we did have two all-state individuals for the winter season. Music Awards, we had a lot of them this winter, actually about two weeks ago. We had Misha Chamber Choir received an exemplary rating. The Misha State Large Ensemble won. And percussion had an exemplary rating as well. And then our Misha District Choir, we took seven individuals to the district that qualified on to state. Three of those individuals right there in that picture, they were all-state choir, and they will represent us at all-state choir. And then we had 14 that were all-district band, and they will go to state competition here April 25th. In addition to that, one of our all-state individuals was Mackenzie Moffett. She took third place overall at the Misha Class Two Girls Wrestling Championships. She did a tremendous job. I think she lost three matches all year long. But on top of that, she's in SGA, she's in pretty much everything involved under the sun at the high school. I'm extremely proud of her. She got into the sport late, but obviously having a lot of success and truly what we want to see our student athletes, the type of person we want our student athletes to represent us. In addition to that, Brianna Heard was just named All-State for Class Six. She was initially, since this PowerPoint was made, been named to the All Ozark, Ozon All Team. She was the leading player for the Ozarks. In addition to that, Brianna Heard is also our all-time leading point scorer for Waynesville, so. We did have one student athlete sign this winter. Actually, had two come in my office this morning that will be signing here within the next couple of weeks. But Trinity Wimberly, she will be going to the University of Health and Science in St. Louis and playing soccer, which I didn't even know that that university existed. But I talked, got to talk to the rep, and he said that they'll be looking for more Waynesville athletes like Trinity, so. Summer dates coming up. We will have our youth camps starting here very shortly. This week, those camps will start being released. Our first one is actually the middle of May. That will be an elementary wrestling camp that'll take place in the afternoon. All those registrations will be posted two weeks prior to on our athletics site. We'll also put out a PR of those, and we'll push those out. You have a two-week window to sign up for those. Once you sign up, you can make payment online as well, very convenient and easy. And so those will be coming out. Our High School 20 Contact Days summer schedules will be posted the beginning of May. So coaches are working on those summer schedules right now. The Tiger Performance Training schedule for the winter, or for the summer, will be out as well with that. And so we'll have one comprehensive calendar that you can check all sports and try to avoid as many conflicts as possible with all the sports that we have. June 10th and August 5th, we will have mandatory parent-student-athlete meetings at Waynesville High School Auditorium. So we'll be actually going back to an in-person meeting, and this will also be posted online afterwards. But the in-person meeting, I think, is something that we're kind of, we've missed since COVID. We would like to get back to that. That is for any seventh grader entering the district, any seventh grader, any new person to the school district, or anyone entering the ninth grade will be required to do that. And those dates will be posted as well on our website. Physicals, all student athletes, as we head into the summer, are required to have a physical. That needs to be dated before February 1 of 2024. So if they got one this last February, they're good for all of next year until next February. May 28th and 29th, we will be hosting those at COMC at East Elementary. That was confirmed a couple of days ago. And so we will take those by appointment. Those are free physicals. And in addition to that, August 7th, 8th, and 9th, which is the week before the first day of fall practices, we'll have free physicals as well for all those student athletes. And COMC does a tremendous job. I think they did over like 206 last year, physicals in a four-day window. So they've done tremendous. Communication, just as always, X, X account, we have our Canvas. A lot of our teams will run Canvas or Mind. In addition to that, I've actually been creating a newsletter that we've been posting out, which has had a great response. I think every time we've posted, it's had over 600 views. So it's actually getting more hits than, you know, than some of the other stuff that we do via social media. So we'll continue to post that, and it's something we'll continue to do. And that is a monthly AD update, you know, it's every month and a half, two months, depending on the season. Just a reminder for student athletes' parents, as we do head into, towards the end of the semester, eligibility. This spring's eligibility, second semester eligibility, will be the eligibility for the start of the fall season next year. Just want to remind everyone that credit recovery does not count towards that eligibility. We do have a Zero F policy. And in addition to that, if a student were not to pass a class this semester, they are still eligible to participate through that ineligible student-athlete expectations that we follow. As a reminder, as we, you know, come through the seasons, as fall hits, season passes, everything will be online. We'll continue to utilize our online season passes through MySchoolBucks, so you'll be able to purchase anything on there. That is it. Any questions?
Any questions or comments for Mr. Ace? Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Next up, Social Emotional Programming, Mrs. Long?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to share an update on our social-emotional learning in the district. Just starting with, what exactly is social-emotional learning? So Castle defines social-emotional learning as a process through which children and adults achieve these objectives. I'm a visual person, so I really enjoy their wheel that they utilize here that shows the Wheel of Social Emotional Learning. You can see the self-management, self-awareness, responsible decision-making, relationship skills, and social awareness. The state currently has, still in draft form, SEL standards. But this was something that in January, our school counselors took the opportunity, anytime that we can really examine what we're doing and look for areas that maybe we need to strengthen, or, you know, pull back, or push ourselves in. So we took, in January, on the Professional Development Day, part of the day, we studied these standards and looked at how they're implemented currently within our district at the various grade levels. So it was just a great sort of rubric for us to look and do a check on ourselves and make some plans from. So what does social-emotional learning look like in school? It can be a bunch of different things, as you can see here, a lot of different. It doesn't have to be formalized lessons given by counselors. It can, you know, you can, you can see it in so many activities throughout the building. This right here is actually one of our breathing exercises, a group of middle schoolers being taken through a breathing exercise during transitions. I believe at the end of their PE class, one of our principals caught this on a picture, and he took it and sent it to me, and he said, "I've never seen a PE class so quiet in the middle school." But they, this is something that all of our elective teachers, again, on Professional Development Days, we shared with them how they can incorporate these strategies into their classrooms. And so this was implementation in a PE room. Social emotional support for our students, these are just some of the ways you can see there. We, on the left, that's a presentation, actually, that was a presentation last year for incoming kindergarteners. We ran last summer school a new curriculum for our kindergartners that really focused on school readiness and social-emotional learning to help them to prepare themselves, you know, for their first time in school. You can see here just a variety of different activities that we have. Our 9 through 12 Signs of Suicide lessons, counselor-led lessons for self-harm and suicide prevention, our Hope Squad, and just different activities throughout the district. We've had two guest speakers that also have supported our social-emotional learning with our students. Hearing from students, as you all know, you're part of the group that listens to Student Advisory. They really like listening to people that they're not around every day. You know, the experts or the outsiders that come in and speak to them, and speak in very motivating terms as well. So we've been extremely fortunate the past two years to host a guest speaker in our district for both our middle school and our high school. Chris Heron came last year and spoke to our students, and just last week, Lasada Pippin came and spoke at the middle school and the high school. And his message was on resilience. And so it was really great, and a lot of really good student feedback from that presentation as well. I was also able to tell him, we did take it a little bit of a step further this year. Not only did we let them know, "We listened to you, and we got some guest speaker because you wanted it," we narrowed it down to, I think it was four or five speakers, and gave those to the middle school and the high school for them to take to their students. And so they got to watch their YouTube videos and read a little bit about each presenter. And so he was actually chosen by our students from a narrowed-down group to present, and did a great job. Leader in Me is another. Sometimes you don't always think of it as a social-emotional learning program. It is, it's actually researched and evidence-based by Castle as well. And it promotes social-emotional learning, not just in the classroom, but throughout the school environment, and with the ultimate goal of spreading it throughout your community and homes. Tiger Pride Nights, this is something that Dr. Goforth has allowed me to collaborate with her on topics that really have hit social-emotional learning that are for parent education, and nights that we invite our parents and our students in together. So you can see, in the past couple of years, we've had four of the different topics that we've covered on Tiger Pride Nights have been social-emotional learning targets that we've been able to have. The last one was our Hope Squad, actually, our sixth graders presenting to the parents that night at the Tiger Pride about some of their needs and the work that they do. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions or comments for Mrs. Long? Very good. Thank you, Ms. Long. Job Descriptions, Dr. Goforth?
Thank you, Madam President. The following attached proposed job description is presented for your review as a first reading, Associate Principal. The administration will request approval at the regular May Board of Education meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Goforth. Proposed Policy and Procedure Revisions, First Read, Mrs. Bales?
Thank you, Madam President. Attached for Board's Review and Consideration are the following:
following policies and procedures which will go through the tabs committee review process and we will request adoption at the Regular May Meeting.
Okay, thank you. Under Action Items, we have our Physical Year 24 Surplus List, Mr. Harrison?
Thank you, Madam President. Motion to declare excess items and equipment as surplus property as presented.
If there are no questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Pondrum. Second, Mr. Anderson. All in favor, show of hands. Motion passes. Thank you. Dr. Atkins, our SDC Demonstration Project Proclamation?
Thank you, Madam President. For the past few years, the district has been participating in the work of the Success Ready Student Network system and this year, we joined Cohort 2 of the System Design Zone that looks at how we accredit school districts and how we monitor progress and things like that. And so, this resolution allows us to continue to be part of that work and to be part of the cohort applying for the waiver from the current accountability standards.
Alright, thank you. Are there any questions or comments for Dr. Atkins? If not, I would entertain, entertain a motion to approve. Thank you, Mr. Harn. Second, Mr. Quinn. Thank you. All in favor, show of hands. Alright, 2024-25 Transportation Route Approval, Mrs. Bales?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Tronstad, Director of Transportation requests approval of the transportation routes for the 2024-2025 school year as required by statute. The enclosed report summarizes those routes by bus number and miles. Minor changes to the routes continue to occur throughout the school year, but major changes that require additions or deletions of routes will be brought to the board for approval. Administration makes a motion to approve the transportation routes for the 24-25 school year as presented, please.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Bales? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Mr. Lurcher, thank you. Second, Mr. Anderson. Thank you. All in favor, show of hands. Motion passes. We are at the end. I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Thank you, Mr. Quinn. A second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Keeling, thank you. He's ready to go. All in favor, show of hands. Awesome. Thank you.